Thank you. The Calgary Board of Education acknowledges the traditional territories and oral practices of the Treaty Seven nations, including the Sig Sig Kait Tsitsapie comprised of the Sigsiga, the Gyna, the Begani, and the Umscapi Begani nations. We acknowledge the Sutena Nation, the Ayarhe Nakota comprised of the Chiniki, Berispa, and Good Stony nations, the Matee Nation within Alberta, and all people who make their homes in the Treaty Seven region of southern Alberta. The land on which we gather is traditionally known as Moginsitis, Guccisei, Wunchispa, and Otuscony. As a learning organization, we are committed to advancing the truth and reconciliation calls to action focused on education for reconcili action. Oki, Dadanastada, Ambawa Stich, Tonsay, Tonashi, bonjour, hello, and welcome to all of our staff and public in attendance at today's special virtual meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the agenda for today's meeting. Could I have a motion that the agenda be approved as submitted? Thank you, Trustee Dennis. I will call on each of you to vote. Trustee Dennis.
In favor, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Close.
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee. You, Trustee Bukedinovich?
In favor.
And I also vote in favor, so that motion is carried unanimously. Next on our agenda is item 3.1, Three-Year School Capital Plan 2026 to 2029 Amendment. Chief Superintendent Pittman, would you please introduce the report?
Thank you, Chair Bolger, and good morning, Chair and trustees. Today, administration is presenting to the board a proposed amendment to the CBE Three-Year School Capital, my apologies, Three-Year School Capital Plan 2026-2029 that was originally submitted to government in spring of 2025. I recognize that the request before you is out of cycle. However, as you know, the School Construction Accelerator Program, recently renamed the Schools Now program, is defined within a three-year window, and we are moving into year two. Government is currently, as we speak, in the process of reviewing all capital submissions to be recommended for March 2026. For this project to be considered for spring 2026 approval, CBE needs to make the out-of-cycle request now. The amendment is to add a replacement school project on the site of the former Kensington School. CBE is looking to demolish the existing building and construct a purpose-built school to support students with neurodiverse learning needs. In keeping with the province's Schools Now program, adding a unique setting school to year one of the current CBE capital plan would allow the province to provide an expedited capital approval in the form of planning funding next March. If the CBE were to receive planning funding for this project in spring of 2026, more detailed work would then be performed on the exact scope of the project, including refining project costs and confirming the more detailed elements of programming offered to students. This proposal is responsive to CBE's diverse student population and the provision of a continuum of supports to positively impact student outcomes. Specifically, CBE's share of students with neurodiverse learning needs is increasing and increasing at a faster rate than the provincial average. Roughly 19% or 27,000 students across the CBE have identified special education needs. This is an increase of 3,400 students, or 13%, over the past four years. More than 7,000 elementary students identified with a specific learning disability, SLD, or and/or an attention deficit hyperactivity disorder, ADHD, in Calgary Board of Education classrooms. About 12% or 3,500 students with severe learning needs are enrolled in one of our 300 specialized classes or six unique settings. While the CBE does have a broad range of specialized classrooms and unique settings to support students across a spectrum of complex needs, we do have an identified gap with our shifting population, and specifically, the need for a unique setting program that can provide elementary students with diagnosed neurodiverse learning needs access to earlier intervention through a personalized, evidence-based instruction and holistic supports within a smaller, structured environment. We will need time to confirm all elements of programming offered, given the expedited approval linked to capital planning. If the board approves this amendment, this unique setting school would be added, as I said, to year one of the 2026-2029 capital plan with a request to Alberta Education and Childcare that while out of our typical cycle, still fits in the timeline of the Schools Now program. I do wish to reiterate a few key points. There is an identified gap in programming specifically to support elementary students with a range of neurodiverse special needs. Secondly, we have a lack of space across our system to further expand specialized classes and unique setting spaces to best serve students. When we look at the continuum of supports and services, there are a range of ways that we use to meet the needs of students, and a unique setting is part of that continuum, not the only answer, as trustees well know. Number three, requesting an amendment to the capital plan for planning dollars within the specific timeframe of the Schools Now program would allow us to further explore this opportunity for a replacement school to house a unique setting program. These are early days, and the planning dollars will allow us to further refine programmatic direction, the cost estimates, and confirm much more information around the provision of services. Board approval to amend the capital plan is the first step in that process. At this time, we would be happy to answer your questions. Given this meeting is virtual today, just so that trustees are aware, I will take the lead, either answering your question or directing it to one of our superintendents to provide a further response. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Superintendent Pittman. So trustees, any comments or questions? Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I understand that providing this new-to-CBE unique setting will be able to not only provide equity within our existing continuum of supports, which are the 300 specialized classes and six unique settings, but because of the small population that will actually be served, how will this proposed unique setting generate benefits for students across the entire system?
Through the chair. Thank you, Trustee Close, because we know that the careful management of resources is important, and one of the key elements is reflective of what we have in the continuum. So at that point, all of our answers are going to be framed as what we have and what this addition is part of. So with that, to speak further, I'll ask Superintendent Turner to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you, through the chair. The growth of available spaces in specialized classes has been outpaced by increasing enrollment of students needing specialized supports, and consequently, the complexity of student profiles within these classes has risen. Students who are unable to secure a spot in a specialized class are currently served in their regular community school, and they are receiving supports through area learning teams and school-based support staff. The idea, if we were to receive planning dollars for this unique setting, would serve roughly 5% of that 7,000 students with neurodiverse learning needs, where specialized resources are required by 5% of targeted supports, would provide 15% and the overall population being served in a regular school setting as outlined by a tiered support model. While the population is small, this specialized setting would ensure that students, that 5% with neurodiverse learning conditions, are supported equitably, consistently, as across other unique settings in our system. By concentrating the expertise, evidence-based strategies, and resources, this setting also generates system-wide benefits. Staff can refine best practices, provide training and consultative support, and enhance outcomes for these students who are requiring intensive needs without an impact to regular classrooms. These strategies that are developed strengthen equity and effectiveness across our board.
Thank you. Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Good morning, thank you so much. One of my questions for this morning was going to be, you know, how will this setting differ from our system classes that are currently in schools? I feel like I received some good information there, even through the opening remarks from our chief, and then also the remarks for the question that was just answered by Superintendent Turner. If there's anything to add to that, be happy to hear it. But in listening to those remarks, I was reflecting a bit on the economy of this decision. We know that it will, you know, equity costs us sometimes, and I am a little bit curious, I guess, just in terms of economy, how, like, why this does make sense, and just that being able to provide that targeted support and to be able to maximize resources for the benefit of students.
Through the chair. What I would first start with, and then I'll turn it to Superintendent Turner for any further comments, is when we are investing early, and I think trustees are well aware of our commitment to investing as early as possible to have long-range outcomes, it's not solely about a single program, but rather our ongoing intent to see where our intervention or design can have the greatest long-term impact for students in ultimately completing high school. And in terms of economy, if you focus resources early, and while it does come at additional cost, it does reduce year-over-year other costs, and so that, I would say, return on investment and the consideration of our continued dilution at times across all grades, all settings, does create other challenges for us. This is one of the ways, it cannot be the only answer, to supporting students, because our first value is always within community schools. But from an economic standpoint, early intervention targeted at individual groups has demonstrated, as we've seen through puff programming historically, and when it was in its previous iteration, we saw significant impacts. This is exploring that similar mindset. Superintendent Turner, I'll check with you if there's anything else to add. If not...
I would say, economy certainly and the return on investment is something that is very important. The other concept that I would offer in terms of the economic component is through equity factors, and so wanting to make certain that we are able to provide a similar, sustainable economic option around the continuum of supports and services. We see that being offered in a variety of our other focused areas for learning, identified learning needs, as Chief Superintendent Pittman identified in her opening remarks. This is an area where there is some inequities, and this is the most economical and sustainable way in order to address that inequality. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from trustees? Trustee Dennis, go ahead.
Thank you. So we know that currently, right now, the CBE space is a precious commodity, because our schools are quite full, and certainly appreciate that this replacement school will help to create additional spaces. But I'm also curious, Dem wrote, I guess, you know, I have every confidence that this, that this setting, should it be funded by government, should we be able to invite students into this space in the coming years, that it will be very successful and popular with our parents and families. But I'm wondering, should there be an opportunity for expansion in the future of a program such as this? How scalable is this approach?
Through the chair. What I would offer is, any decision around scaling further, is it scalable? Yes. But it is always set in the context of the students we serve and the range of population. So no decision is made in isolation of other, other unique settings we provide. So from a scalability standpoint, there's two different ways that it could be scalable. Scalable in the context of available space in a specialized class, that is also a component. When we look at unique setting, a unique setting which is a more congregated, structured approach, we would also need to, depending on space availability, be able to prioritize that. However, I would always draw us back to the caveat of that continued need to review, how are we meeting the needs of students at that time? Is this needed to expand? And if it was, then that data would bear itself out.
Thank you, Chief Pittman. I'll maybe just hop in with a question here. So on page nine of 11, it noted that the recurring costs of such a site would be about 4.4 to 4.8 million, and then a one-time cost of two to three for fitting up, and that would be the responsibility of the CBE. So where in our budget would these recurring costs come from, particularly the RAM and the transportation costs? I may know the answer, but I'd like to hear your response.
Through the chair. What I would offer is that without net new recurring funding, we continue to strategically prioritize areas of greatest need. That's, that's our current process, and we look at requests for specialized supports, knowing that they outpace our existing available spaces. Staff will continue to support students within existing resources, and we make adjustments yearly to those specialized classes and programming, again, based on the numbers of students and what that looks like. Students who cannot be placed in a specialized class are served in their regular community school. We do also look at additional support from the area learning team and school-based staff on that front, so that's an important part. And when we look at where recurring, when we make adjustments, and I'll use the example of LEED classes, so LEED are specialized classes that we have increased over the last number of years in response to our EAL, our English as an Additional Language, population shifts, and we have adjusted resources there because we know that if we didn't make that investment, the level of supports that are needed within every school setting, we would not be able to replicate to that degree. So it does then shift from the resource allocation model broadly. It's a bucket of funds that get placed to support. That has been our historical approach. In terms of what's within the report, trustees have advocated, I believe your entire term, for additional funds in support of student complexity and student population growth. This is a further reflection of that continued advocacy and need, and we have identified a specific area to address that. With respect to transportation costs, I'm going to ask Superintendent Breton to address that particular portion of your question.
Through the chair. And so those costs, transportation costs, just as with any other costs, would continue to be captured in the same way they, they are, in terms of being aligned with the various grants. And so specific for transportation, we have a transportation grant, but then as per Chief Pittman's comments, the request here is premised on a net new additional funding request to allow for those recurring operating costs, for those higher single-site costs that would be created by this, to be captured and to be covered, I should say, more importantly, to then avoid creating monetary impacts on the rest of the system from a transportation perspective.
Okay, thank you both very much. Trustee Close.
Sorry, I just need to confirm. I really welcome your fulsome answers, but I just need to confirm and perhaps say aloud that, that if, if no net new funding is received, we certainly can't do an interim approach. But if no net new funding is received, we can't move forward, so we're not assuming the risk, if we, if we do planning, if we receive planning dollars and further explore this, and we do not receive net new funding for operational, we can't move forward at all?
Through the chair. Thank you, Trustee Close, for positioning that question, and that's certainly what we have documented within both the report and the attachment letter to the minister, that additional funds are needed to engage in this further type of specialized programming, given the context of our current funding realities.
Trustees, other comments or questions? Trustee Bukedinovich.
Just trying to get a bit of historical background here. So Attachment 2 has a brief summary of the CBE's current 300 specialized classes and six unique setting schools. And I know just over the course of this four-year term, we've seen an increase of around 20,000 students, which is significant, but we haven't added a single unique setting school during this period of phenomenal enrollment growth. So of the six unique setting sites that we offer, when was the most recent one opened?
Superintendent Turner, I'll turn that one to you.
Thank you, through the chair. And although, so the more recent school building, a purpose-built school facility, was opened in January 2017 for Christine Mickle. It was a longstanding program, but efforts were made at that time to build a brand-new facility that would include a variety of different unique features in that building that were beneficial to the learning population that was identified for that program. And so 2017 was the last new unique setting school that's been opened. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Go ahead, Trustee Bukedinovich.
So, reading this report, I see that the purpose of this is to provide intervention for students with mild to moderate neurodiverse learning needs, and we have, within the continuum of tools, because we have other, other tools in place for students with severe or complex learning needs, and so this is where the gap is. And then the report does provide examples of mild-to-moderate learning, sorry, neurodiverse learning needs. And I appreciate that the proposed school would be cutting-edge and innovative, and, and I also heard the comments earlier that Chief Superintendent Pittman provided, saying that if approved, that planning phase would allow also for designing which population can best be served, and to do designs for the details of that. But because this proposed school would be an innovation, once it's rolled out, staff members and administration might learn from the operations about even newer and better best practices and ways to further tweak what is on offer. So I'm just a bit concerned about the extent to which we'd be locking in this proposed unique setting school by virtue of approving it as, as is. So my question is, in the future, to what extent would CBE administration be able to refine eligibility for this unique setting school and, and refine the approach and services offered through this unique setting school as administration's understanding continues to call for how to best serve students with mild to moderate neurodiverse learning needs?
Through the chair. Thank you, Trustee Bukedinovich, for highlighting the importance of designing programming and supports in response to both evidence and best practice, as well as our student need, and the flexibility that is important for us to be responsive. I'm going to ask Superintendent Turner to expand on the approach that administration intends to take with full recognition of the value that we are highlighting this as a unique setting. We are highlighting it as an elementary-focused program, and we have provided a broad category and range of supports based on our current analysis of the continuum of supports and services available. So with that, Superintendent Turner.
Thank you, through the chair. And so approving this capital plan amendment would not lock the board into a fixed model for this unique setting school. We will continue, administration will continue on how to best support students with mild, moderate, neurodiverse learning needs, understanding the limitation of our space and our resources, and we'll continue to refine eligibility criteria, the various program approach, and the various services that would be needed in order to meet this unique student population need. At this time, we're asking for this capital plan amendment for planning dollars to continue to refine this programming and infrastructure need. Thank you.
Trustee Close, go ahead.
Thank you. One of the risks I see is, is actually at the site, the Kensington School site, so could you expand and share analysis of, of perhaps the difficulty of the closed road and allowance parcel owned by the city of Calgary?
Through the chair, I'll ask Superintendent Breton to respond to that.
Through the chair. Yes, certainly, Trustee Close, you've, you've hit upon an oddity that we discovered as we were reviewing that site. Of course, Kensington School currently on location has been there since 1954, and somehow it seems to have been built over top a road allowance, something that normally shouldn't have been allowed, and so an odd situation there. So now we, of course, are asking for consideration for an amendment that would potentially lead us to planning dollars, should the government approve, and those planning dollars are exactly the, the dollars that we'd be looking for to start some of that work, to clarify the uncertainty created by that. Specifically, I'm thinking also about the Education Amendments Act, and how the approval of a, of a replacement school automatically triggers the transfer of the lands to the property, to the province, I should say, and whether or not this would also apply to this road allowance. And so that is one potential course of action that might end up occurring. Alternatively, of course, you know, in terms of risks, I do want to underscore that Kensington School has been on that location for over 70 years. We have never had the city come knocking at our door saying, hey, we want to put a road through your school. And so, you know, we're not thinking that this is a high risk. We have been in touch with the city. They have explained to us what the normal process for procurement of city lands such as this parcel would be, and so, you know, we know what the regular process would be, and now it's really a question of going through those planning phases to really clarify if under the new legislation, there might be a different process to ensure that that land is properly captured for the province, for this unique setting school.
Thank you, Superintendent Breton. Any other comments or questions? Trustee Close.
Thank you, Chair Bolger. I'm not sure I'm going to be entirely clear with this, but it is about the size fit on page 711. So it talks about 288 neurodiverse students in a 590-capacity-sized building and 316 neurodiverse students in a 740-capacity-sized building. And I know that the final size would be determined through the initial planning phase, but I was curious, as I was reading the report, if there's any research or knowledge about what the best program fit is as far as size goes. So, how do I say this? So how many students with mild to moderate neurodiverse learning needs, such as specific learning disabilities in writing or mathematics or attention-related challenges, including mild ADHD? or attention-related challenges, including mild ADHD, should be accommodated in one building?
Through the chair, I'll pass it over to Superintendent Turner to respond.
Thank you through the chair. The research is not definitive on the number of students in a particular class or a particular school size that would ideally meet the needs of these individual learners. What the research is quite clear on is that a more personalized approach that can be accommodated with higher ratios of staff, individual program plans, and really truly understanding individual needs of the student to tailor interventions is what would be best required for students with this learning profile. And so really through the planning phase, what we would be able to do is to better explore and understand what the ideal state may be for this type of programming if it were to go forward. But what we do know from literature and best practice is really the more small personalized environment with an individual program plan to guide individual interventions would be beneficial for these learners. And that is occurring to the best of our ability in our regular classes right now. And those practices would continue and shift to this environment. Thank you.
Thank you Superintendent Turner. Trustee Bukedinovich, go ahead.
Just a question that's arising for me as I was listening to some of the questions earlier, some of the questions around specialized classes. We have L and L class with a number of different specialized classes. And one of them are the L and L classes. I'm wondering, how does that work in a school? Because like, let's say it's a K to sixth school. That's seven grades right there. And even with, sometimes we do have combined grades, that would still be two, three, four, four classes. So when we have these L and L classes or others, it doesn't have to be L and L specialized classes. Do they, are there typically a number? I feel like I should have asked this earlier in my term, but are there typically a number of classes within a school? Or do kids have to, you know, go to one setting for grade one? And then another one for two, three, another one for four, five? Just kind of wondering how that works.
Through the chair, I'm going to start in a nutshell. Just give you a little bit of a history walk on that front, because it's something that in terms of the provision of recognizing our cost limitations, our funding limitations, what I would offer is the CBE used to have in elementary grades, many different portions of programming. And we then sought to combine EES classes at the elementary level to create greater flexibility, because we had these really narrow programmatic definitions that then meant students were traveling really long distances in really specialized, challenging circumstances. So we've got examples of where we've looked at a broader range so that we can have continuity within a school and over a series of grades. What does shift, though, is based on the level of need. Not all students remain in specialized classes, nor are they intended to remain in specialized classes for their entire schooling. There are a number of our programs where students are attending as part of an intervention and during that time are actually almost fully integrated within the regular setting, within and alongside their peers. So I would be reticent for trustees to have an understanding that all specialized classes means that students attend only those class settings for the entirety of their schooling in all cases. That is not how many of those programs are designed. L and L is a prime example. Literacy and Learning is a prime example of that, where students are there for a portion of time to then be able to integrate in regular classroom settings. And there are a number of other programs that are designed in that way. We do have to continue to, it's been a challenge as we've managed our actual physical capacity of late, because we really don't wish to create all kinds of additional disruption. So that's where we've really seen, we've had to do really careful planning and exceptional coordination between facilities, environmental services, transportation and school improvement.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from trustees? We'll give it just a few more seconds if anyone's thinking. All right. Well, is there a trustee who wishes to bring forward a motion regarding this report? Thank you trustee Dennis.
Thank you chair. I move that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment to year one of the 2026 to 2029 three-year school capital plan.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees approves the amendment to year one of the 2026-2029 three-year school capital plan. Trustee Dennis, would you please open debate?
Yes, I will chair. Thank you so much. First, I certainly want to thank my colleagues for their questions and administration for the excellent conversation today. Thinking in the spirit of transparency, it's important for me to share that I am on record voting against, in addition to our capital plan, when the project did not meet the threshold of the criteria that has been approved by the Board of Trustees. Our process is important because it assures Calgarians in every corner of the city that their community is not being overlooked and that decisions are data-based and evidence-informed. However, this project is truly unique. And there are many reasons that I am in full support of adding this to our capital plan. I do wish there was a different way to make this ask, but our capital plan is the vehicle we have to make this request to government. It allows us to use a site that continues to cost us money, yet serves no useful purpose for students. And it's a building that simply needs to come down. Adding this to our capital plan gives us the opportunity to transform that site into a place that can offer targeted supports to students that need it most. Will it come with a cost? Yes, of course it will. And we will certainly advocate to government for the funding necessary to make this happen. But doing right by every student we serve does come at a cost, and that is not new for the CBE. Additional investments in these early years will ultimately save money down the road. And more importantly, it creates a pathway for success for students who deserve and need this help. We are not strangers to unique settings. With our diligent oversight, they work. They help to build success, and they are well-supported by parents and families. And creating this setting for students is in alignment with interpretations that the board recently approved under OE2, Learning Environment Treatment of Students. And I'll highlight only a couple of those under 2.2 of that policy. Welcoming: A learning environment that is encouraging, engaging, and nurtures a sense of belonging. And supportive: A learning environment that provides opportunities for growth and development necessary for students to reach their full potential as a learner. This request squares perfectly.
Thank you trustee Dennis. Are there trustees who wish to enter first round of debate? Trustee Close, thank you. Oh, sorry. Actually, I see trustee Bukedinovich just got the lead on that. Trustee Bukedinovich, go ahead.
It's like a game show and I hit the button faster. So I wanted to weigh in to say that I'm quite pleased to see administration bring this report forward for board approval, and I will be voting in favor of it. I'm convinced this school is needed, because as the report states, there are more students needing specialized supports than available spots for placement in specialized classrooms or unique settings. And the proposed school in Kensington would help to narrow that gap between what is needed and what is available. And I particularly appreciate that the school will focus on children with mild-to-moderate neurodiverse learning needs, because it will focus on what I've come to think of as the missing middle. Over my past four years as a CBE school trustee, I've learned that we only have so many specialized classes and unique setting schools, and they are full. This means that only the kids with the most complex needs are eligible to get into those spots. But what about the kids who are just below that cutoff? I worry about those kids, and I hear from parents of these kids. For example, one father of a child with mild-to-moderate neurodiverse learning needs wrote to me to say that in his current setup, our son spends eight hours a day at school with minimal effectiveness. Without more targeted support, I am deeply concerned about his ability to thrive and succeed. As a family, we are acutely aware of the importance of early intervention, and we feel that more resources and attention are critical for children like our son. And that's the quote from this dad. And it's heartbreaking for me as a trustee when I receive letters like this. I know our amazing teachers here at the CBE have been doing their absolute best under challenging circumstances. But I hear from parents who worry that we should be doing a better job of supporting students with mild-to-moderate needs, who sometimes fly just under the radar. I've also heard from parents and teachers who have been telling me that the lack of adequate supports doesn't just affect the kids who have complex learning needs, it also affects the entire classroom. And I also wanted to comment on the concept of establishing a unique setting school to serve this population versus adding specialized classes. I'm convinced of the importance of adding this as a tool, not, as we heard from Superintendent Pittman earlier, is the only solution, but as one of the tools along a continuum of supports. I'm supportive of the concept of establishing a unique setting school, because to add specialized classes, we need to find spaces for multiple classrooms to accommodate multiple grades. And that's starting to look very much like trying to fit two schools into one building. And we do not have space for that right now. This unique setting school would provide our school board with one more tool for supporting the learning needs of students with mild-to-moderate neurodiverse learning needs. And if this model is proved successful and if our data shows us the need is there, then one day I'd like to see additional locations open in Calgary. It would be great news for kids in Calgary if we could make this happen. And I absolutely intend to vote in favor of this recommendation.
Thank you trustee Bukedinovich. Trustee Close, go ahead.
I would like to echo many of the remarks that trustee Bukedinovich just previously mentioned, and then just add to them in this way. I want to start with, we need all of our year-one capital requests addressed in the upcoming process. But I'm also convinced that in order for this unique application or unique setting to be considered or planned for, that we need to amend our capital plan now. It's unusual, but I believe planning dollars will help accelerate CBE in addressing a gap in programming. I'm really quite taken with the elementary focus and the development of skills and also the ability to transition back successfully, as well as the learnings that will impact our system as a whole. So I do believe that as a board, we've done the heavy lifting. The new board will have to continue to do the heavy lifting with advocacy on increased funding, on increased funding for student complexity, and on even reviewing and resourcing a new standard of special education. But also CBE has to find ways to make a difference. And I believe that this initiative is doing that. And I think also, just to echo again, we've heard some of these conversations from parents and families when we recently had relocation and/or school closure conversations. And so this has given us all pause to consider how we are addressing the continuum of learning needs and how we can move forward. I've considered the risks that are in front of us here, and I believe the outcomes for all students outweighs those risks. And the value of focusing on student success also comes to the foreground. So I will be supporting this motion to approve the amendment to year one of our 2026-2029 three-year school capital plan.
Thank you trustee Close. I'll maybe just weigh in here, noting that, you know, as trustees, we are well aware that class size and classroom complexity continues to increase in our schools. And we do know that the CBE has seen a greater increase in the number of students with complex learning needs as compared to other boards across the province. We also know that student complexity in our classrooms impacts our ability to meet the needs of all students, not just those requiring additional support. And a 95% system-wide utilization rate means that our schools are full and that the addition of thousands of additional learning spaces are critical in order to serve the needs of students across the city of Calgary. And high utilization rates also mean that our schools have physically less space to support students where additional space accommodations are required. And this amendment to the capital plan requesting a unique setting school serving the needs of ADHD and SLD students serves three purposes in my mind. The first is hundreds of additional learning spaces will be created in the system. Students with ADHD and SLD will receive the support they need. And three, by supporting students whose needs may be better met in a unique setting, we're reducing classroom complexity, which is ultimately beneficial to all students and teachers and staff supporting them. So we know that the CBE is a leader in terms of evidence-based decision-making and that a wide repertoire of specialized classrooms and unique settings exist throughout our system as shown in Attachment 2 of this report. We know that most students with ADHD and SLD do well in the regular classroom, but the need for unique setting is evident by the numbers presented. So this proposed school would serve students who require specialized supports and services and a need that is not currently being addressed in a unique setting site within the CBE. So I am also in favor of this motion. Anyone else for round one? Okay, moving on to round two. Anyone wishing to enter round two of debate? Trustee May, go ahead.
Thank you. So first I view, I do think this is a great initiative. It begins conversations on the expansion of services and learning environments for neurodiverse learners. This is the first time we've discussed such a standalone program. And I am hopeful that moving forward, we have greater transparency and opportunity for communities to understand and speak to the decisions explored today. Procedurally, I support the motion and submission to the ministry. It's an area of interest, and it advances inclusion and supports for neurodiverse learners. Plus, it really clearly demonstrates a snapshot of the actual costs in supporting students with special education needs, with staffing, transportation, and how we have to follow any fee guide or granting. This does mean we're adding an out-of-cycle project that is not site-ready on our year-one priorities without the history and capital ranking criteria that typically guide such work. Depending on provincial funding commitments and pre-planning commitments, I'm hopeful this will lead to a larger, more detailed discussion during next year's capital plan submission. Overall, it makes no sense for me to vote against this or hinder advancement in creating opportunities for students. My support of this motion is with a personal acceptance that I have to be okay with not asking what I consider to be critical governance or prevent questions and gaining clarity and understanding a referral in terms of current unique setting offerings on SAP, previous decisions of closures and relocations before the board, transportation equity access, and if any impact to capital reserves.
Thank you trustee May. Anyone else for round two? Well, I'll maybe just weigh in, round two of debate. So this amendment to the capital plan is needed, and it is timely. We know that governments are aware that classroom complexity is a significant issue across schools within Alberta. We also know that the Ministry of Education and Childcare is committed to this area of need, as evidenced by the creation of the Aggression on Classroom Complexity Task Force. With regards to this location, in a city as large as Calgary, no one spot will be perfect. But this Kensington site is accessible for many, many areas of the city, as noted in the report. And the site-fit plot of land is also suitable for a purpose-built unique setting. So it's important for members to outline that without additional operational funding, schools such as this unique setting are not viable. The CBE currently diverts approximately $50 million each year from regular programming to support complexity within the district, and that is not sustainable. As trustees, we are tasked with making decisions in the best interests of the entirety of the system. So though the location may not be perfect for all communities, it is a great start. it is a great start that can serve the needs of hundreds of students across the system and be a model to work from moving forward. Should this project be approved, we will be able to scale it, hopefully, in order to create additional sites across the city in support of meeting the needs of more students and reducing classroom complexity at the same time. I hope my fellow trustees will support this motion and approve this amendment to our capital plan, recognizing the unique needs of the CBE and the students that we serve. Trustee Vukadinovich.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bolger. I also wanted to weigh in on this second round of debate. I thought that this was a site-ready site, does have all the utility hookups, and it would be ready for construction. So just a point of clarification is my understanding this is indeed a site-ready site and that we always have site-ready sites on the year-one of our capital plan. I wanted to say in my second round of debate that I am a true believer that the CBE does a better job than any private school in supporting kids with learning disabilities and with neurodiversity. The difference is private schools work with a vastly greater budget. So I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize that, and as we've heard earlier today, that this is not just a straightforward capital request because in order to offer this school, the CBE would also need to see an increase to base funding in order to afford the operating costs associated with the school, including staffing costs and transportation, building maintenance, ongoing infrastructure renewal costs. So I plan to vote in favor of this recommendation, knowing that ultimately the CBE would only be able to afford to bring this program to life if the provincial government provides the CBE with a significant boost to per-student funding. As our Board of Trustees has mentioned several times, Alberta has the lowest per-student funding in Canada, the very lowest. And the per-student funding that CBE students receive has remained essentially the same since 2019, while the price of everything else has been going up. And over the past couple of years, our board has been advocating for an increase to per-student funding in Alberta to bring us up in line with the Canadian average. And if the Premier of Alberta, the Honorable Daniel Smith, were to increase K-12 education funding up to the average level of per-student funding in Canada, the CBE would receive an additional $180 million in offering funds at current enrollment levels. At the CBE, we know we always work with what we get. But if we got more, we could do more, and this was an example of the more that we could do. So I sincerely hope that this school capital request, that we will vote in favor of it about the year-one capital plan. I hope that the provincial government approves it and approves it with an addition to operating funds because this proposed school, if it were to come to life, would be phenomenal for kids in Calgary. And it would be phenomenal for families because it takes all the boxes that we know are important to the provincial government. It ticks the box of building schools for growth. It ticks the box of improving safety for students and staff. It ticks the box of getting back to basics because it would reduce some of the complexity our teachers currently have to work with in regular classrooms. It ticks the box of parental rights because it reflects what parents and guardians have been advocating for. And it ticks the box of meeting our mission of the CBE, CBE of supporting the learning needs of each student in keeping with their individual abilities and gifts.
Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich. Any other trustees for second round? Seeing none, a trustee Dennis wished to close debate.
I will. Thank you so much. Also, first of all, I want to thank my colleagues for their tremendous commentary during debates for highlighting the many truths that we need to consider as we make this decision. I'll also offer my thanks to our chief and her staff for the work on this project. In the board's conversation with the minister, he was very clear on the timelines for his office to consider this request as they prepare for intergovernmental conversations related to capital planning. Timelines were very tight, and so much has been accomplished in a short period of time. I also appreciate administration for bringing the board along step by step in this conversation, testing ideas, sharing possibilities, and allowing the board to speak into this decision. This request is of no surprise to the board, and it does reflect our collective voice. The timing of this request couldn't be better. Educators, government, the board, and families have all acknowledged concern around increasing complexity and the desire to do something meaningful about it, to provide more support where more support is needed, and to ease some pressure across the system. This targeted approach makes sense. And take a moment and consider the fact that the Minister of Education and Childcare established the Aggression and Complexity in Schools Action Team. Three people sitting in this meeting today are part of that action team. This discussion is live, and everyone is invested. Just look at the trustee advocacy page of our website. We've been telling the story of our incredible enrollment growth and the increased complexity that has come along with it. We have before us a made-by-CBE solution, and that is the best kind because we know our students the best. In my opinion, we have a moral obligation to do our best and to give our best for every student that walks through our doors. And this solution will help us to do just that.
Thank you for closing, Trustee Dennis. I will now call the question with those in favor of the motion. Trustee Dennis, how do you vote?
In favor.
Trustee Close?
In favor.
Trustee May?
In favor.
Trustee Vukadinovich?
In favor.
And I also vote in favor, so that is carried unanimously. Thank you. Are there any additional motions on this report? Any additional motions on this report? Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich.
Yes, I would like to move that the Board of Trustees authorizes the chair to communicate with the Minister of Education and Childcare as provided in attachment one to the report.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions about the motion? The motion on the floor is that the Board of Trustees authorizes the chair to communicate with the Minister of Education and Childcare as provided in attachment one to the report. Trustee Vukadinovich, would you please open debate?
I don't have too much to say on this motion because now that we have approved the earlier motion that Trustee Dennis brought forward, what you see before you is a straightforward, non-controversial motion to apprise the Minister of Education and Childcare of our board-approved amendment to the CBE's 2026-2029 capital plan. So what we're doing through this letter is asking the minister for his approval to submit this important board-approved amendment to the CBE 2026-29 capital plan, given the timeline has passed for submission. This is why I don't really have any debate points. It's a straightforward motion that follows naturally from the previous motion, so I urge my colleagues to support it.
Thank you very much. Are there any trustees who would like to enter first round of debate? Seeing none, are there any trustees who wish to enter second round of debate? Trustee Vukadinovich, would you like to close?
I have nothing further to add.
Thank you. So I will call the question. Trustee Dennis, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Close?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee May?
In favor.
Thank you, Trustee Vukadinovich.
In favor.
Thank you. I also vote in favor, so that is carried unanimously. I would like to thank all of you who joined us for today's special meeting. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 14, 2025, and this meeting is now terminated.